States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we'll move on to item number two, which is visitors. Are there any visitors here that would like to be recognized at this time?
Alan Sammett, in case you have any questions for him.
Thank you, Alan. Anybody else? Andrew is the only one left, so, okay, good to see. On to number three, approval of the minutes for the October 20, 2021 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
A second. Are we gonna have enough for a whole second?
Second.
Right, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstaining.
Okay, that passes. Item number four, which is to appoint the chairperson and vice-chairperson. Do we have any nominations for the chairperson and vice-chairperson?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion at this time that the chairperson and the vice-chairperson be re-elected for another year.
Okay, a year or two. Two years.
Sorry?
It'll be for two years.
Oh, for two years. I meant that for two years.
A second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Thank you again, everyone. We'll move on now to item number five, which is to set the meeting schedule. Everybody has a copy of this schedule. So if everybody would like to review it, if everybody's comfortable with this schedule as presented, we can make a motion to adopt this meeting schedule. Any comments at this time? Everybody good?
All right.
Motion to adopt the meeting schedule.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Carol, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Item number six, which is the new council member introductions. Obviously, we have three new members, one on the phone. Hopefully, he can hear us. You there, Chris?
I'm here, I can hear you.
All right, excellent. So basically, just wanted to briefly introduce the three new members, Tom Hollinger, Chris Pisante, and Carrie Allen. And if any of you would like to just make any comment at all, or you can or not, that's entirely up to you. I was just gonna leave it open to anybody who would like to have any comments at this time.
Just happy to be here. I'm glad I got in. Anxious to get working.
I agree. It's been a very exciting time to be here.
Excellent. Chris?
Yeah, I'll keep it, I'll keep it short because I don't want to be the annoying guy on the phone when the camera is here, but I'm looking forward to working with all you guys and, uh, thanks.
Excellent. And also, I was just gonna ask Carl actually, too, to just address the council overall, just so at least it comes, obviously, we have new members here, just to kind of give a brief overview, obviously, of how we would like to function here. Obviously, most of the functions and the responsibilities and everything and such are directed through the charter. But obviously, as a town manager, he has a big input on how things are run here on the council and how we interact with him. So I was just gonna ask him to just briefly give us kind of a little, an overview on how he would like to see things moving forward with the council.
I sent out everybody an orientation packet, whether you were a new member or a pre-existing member, giving you a little bit of an overview on some basic things about how the charter works. I gave you a copy of the charter, a rough outline of what the budget calendar would be. I know you all got your W2s. Make sure you fill those out and get them back to finance. Interaction with the staff is really, council members should direct all their queries to me rather than going directly to staff. Then I gave you a bunch of things called guidance for council members. This isn't written in the charter, but these are sort of things that expedite working well together and having a cohesive council. So they're not, they're not in the blue book, or you're not gonna find them in the town's code, but they are things that help smooth out how the council can interact and work together as a team that's gonna work together and forge consensus to help the town move forward during this two-year cycle.
Thank you. Any questions for Carl?
I have a question. The interaction with, you call them the staff. For instance, the other day, I went to see Sue because I wanted to ask a few questions about the budget. Is that allowed?
Yeah.
May I do that for personal? And if I have a question for Mary regarding something that I hoped to discuss here tonight, am I allowed to talk to Mary?
For something that's gonna be discussed tonight, you really shouldn't be discussing it with Mary.
Okay, all right, I needed to know. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And what about the Sue question? Would I be allowed to ask her questions about the budget?
Well, if it'd be-
Just as a, as a learning?
Yeah, it would be cleaner if you just directed to me, so there's no confusion on the other side.
Okay, good to know.
Because before a government is so new, it's easier that you just kind of, for the staff, that it all goes through me, and they don't feel awkward and they don't feel-
Understood. Thank you. Got it.
Anyone else? All right, thank you again, everyone. We will now move on to item number seven. We have a couple appointments for this evening and then some that actually we'll talk about. So the first on is Alan Sammett, Democrat for the Board of Education for a term until November 2023. He's gonna be, obviously, replacing Chris Pisante, who was on the Board of Education and resigned as now a council member. Would anybody like to hear from Alan? Do you want to say a few words? It's entirely up to you.
I'm looking forward to it. I've been here for many, many years, and I sincerely, you know, hope to do a good job. Thank you.
So at this point, we'll just look for a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any other further comments?
I do have a question.
Yep.
Alan, are you still a teacher?
No.
You've been retired for how long?
I retired as of November 1st, 2020.
Okay. I've just, you know, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm very familiar with you and your work and your participation and your excellent history as a teacher at Morgan and stuff. I just never know. I mean, with you there and now with Jack Sherbin, are we crossing a fiduciary line in putting Mr. Sammett and Mr. Sherbin on the Board of Education? Because I presume there are pensions that arrive from the Board of Education. And I just don't know whether we're crossing a, an ethical boundary with having, I mean, Mr. Sherbin's wife was a teacher for years, and I presume that she's in a position to get some sort of a pension. I just, I just would like some clarity whether this is, you know, a gray area, a black area, a white area, or whatever. Is this our, our question, or is this something that?
May I speak?
Yeah, well?
Yes.
I would say au contraire. The fact that we have a background in town with the school system, I think it's a positive.
I'm sorry, would you mind standing up, please, so I can? Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you.
It is a positive. And I think we're bringing a lot to the table in terms of knowledge of the school system and how things work, what's up with it, and, uh-
Well, that's not my question. My question is the fiduciary thing, because I know in the Code of Ethics, there is a major portion that states that, I mean, is this our, is this our question or not? If it's not, I just will drop the conversation.
I'm not the town attorney, but I don't think there's an ethical conflict here. As a Board of Ed member, he's not voting for anything for himself individually. Any decisions would be for all retirees, not anything that he would benefit.
Okay, all right, works for me.
It's no different than Eric having been here for two years. He could have voted for the Board of Ed budget because he's not aggrandizing himself, and that's what the Code of Ethics speaks to.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to get some clarity on that, on that. Thank you. And thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Thank you, Alan. Number two on our item is Todd Pofeski, Republican for Town Treasurer until November 2023. Todd is currently the Town Treasurer, has been for quite a while, so he has agreed to stay on. So we will just look for a motion to appoint Todd.
I'll make that motion.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstain? Thank you. Now, we will move on to the council liaisons to EDC, Planning and Zoning Commission, Inland Wetlands Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals. These are the ones that were left from previous council members that are no longer with us, so we would just open this up for discussion. I wasn't gonna sit here and appoint any specific person to a board of commission. I obviously want all your input and decide, you know, what you feel comfortable maybe signing up into and getting involved with. So I was gonna leave that up to full council members to discuss. So if there's anybody on the council here now that has an interest in, you know, being on one of these, please speak up. And Carrie?
I would like to be the liaison for P&amp;Z, please.
Okay. So we have a motion to appoint Carrie Allen to Planning and Zoning Commission liaison.
I'll make that motion.
A second?
Second.
Okay, Christine. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstain? Great. Thank you, Carrie.
Yes, and would you mind explaining, I assume the responsibility would be going to the meetings on the first month of the month?
Correct. Right, so basically, the council members would just attend their meetings that they have once a month, and then just kind of give an update and bring an update back to the council as to what was discussed. Because a lot of those things that go on in some of these meetings, we aren't aware of. So it's good that we have somebody there for the meetings to come back to the council. So should anything come back to us as it relates to any of those, at least we'd be aware of kind of what's going on.
Well, Chris, this is Chris.
Yep.
I, I wouldn't, I, I would, I would, I would be interested in being liaison for the Board of Ed and that is the mission that we're just coming, because I know that's what you just mentioned above. I wouldn't wanna fall apart for other positions if I was going to be working for that, because that would be a pretty, there's a lot of meetings going on.
Okay, agree. Good, I mean, we can appoint a B.O.E. liaison, right? Yeah?
We could turn everyone.
Look for a motion then to appoint Chris Pisante to the Board of Education Liaison?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And Chris, I, if throwing my head in the ring, I would-
Hang on, let's just finish this one.
Okay.
Did we get it right?
Yes.
So we're good, okay. Thank you, Chris.
Bravo.
And I think that's good, actually. I talked to Chris a little bit about that before, and I thought it was a good idea for him to do something like that, as someone coming from the Board of Ed, that then can come back to the council. I know in the past, council members, we have had some, obviously, questions about kind of, not what they do, but how they do. And it's more, I think, important that, as council members, we kind of understand how they get to those kind of budget numbers sometimes. So I think it would benefit the council to have somebody doing that. Tom?
I would, if possible, like to be the liaison for the Economic Development Commission. Seems like it's, there's a lot of development going on. It might be an exciting thing to sit and listen to.
Okay. Have a motion to?
I have a motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. So EDC, Planning and Zoning. So the two hot items. Everybody, everybody really, these are the good ones, the Inland Wetlands and Zoning Board of Appeals. So I think the last time, did we not do both? We did Planning and Zoning and Inland Wetlands? Or did you did all of them?
He did all of them.
He did all of them? Okay. Who's left? Who's left? I mean, does anybody have any interest in doing any of the, being the liaison for either of those? All right, so we're gonna have to figure out, we're gonna have to figure out how we go about that then. We'll leave that one open for now. All right.
Does ZPA, do they meet on a regular basis, or only when there's appeals?
Just when there's appeals.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that's pretty regularly. They're very busy.
All right. I love to see everybody puts their head down when it comes to those two. Nobody wants to do it. What did you just say, inland wetlands? All right, so we'll keep that one open for now. We'll try to figure out how we handle that one. Item number eight, line item, transfer from the assessor's office. Everybody has a copy of that, assess, of that transfer. $750, decreasing from in-service going to general supplies for $750. Do we have a motion to approve the transfer?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Item number nine, Finance Director's Report. Sue is here.
Hello, everybody. Um, just for the benefit of the new council members, I just want to give you a brief overview of what I do report to the town council and how the Finance Director's Report is given to you. It's your second meeting of every month. You'll be getting this report, and it's for the month ending prior to the month of the meeting. So for example, your package now, with the town's fiscal year begins July 1, you have the October results in front of you, which is the fourth month of the fiscal year. And I always, in my analysis, this comparisons to budget and also to the current year. The first page of the report is the revenue summary. The second page is the expenditure summary. The next seven pages of the report are detailed budgets of the expenditure. So that ties up to the expenditure summary. The last two pages of the report are the town's investment balances, and then the contingency and fund balances. And that report is important to you because it's understanding the amount of reserves that are available to the town. Then I always try to include a brief overview, a brief summary, a write-up. And in the summary, I always try to highlight the three significant revenue areas to the town, which are the tax revenues, because that makes up 87% of the town's budget, the state revenues, because that's, makes up 12% of our budget, and then the town services, which are all the fees charged by the departments throughout the town. So I always try to highlight each of those, and I do a comparison to where we stand compared to budget in the prior year. Expenses, I just try to, they're pretty much operating expenses, so I just try to highlight the results for you as well. So you have the October reports in front of you, and just a couple other comments that I'll make on the October results are, year-to-date, so for the four months ending in October, the revenues for the month of October were $29 million. Most of that were tax revenues that came in. Tax revenues now were 56% of what was budgeted. That's pretty much comparable to where we usually are this time of year. State revenues, the ECS, which is the Educational Cost Sharing Grant, of which the town receives over $5 million for the full year. We received our first quarter payment of that in October, which was 1.3 million, I believe. And then we also received the Muni Stabilization Grant for $288,000. Both of those were exactly what we had budgeted. Both of those have come on, in on time. The remaining state grants are also coming in as been budgeted and expected, so there's no surprises there. Town service revenues are about $400,000 for the month of October. Strong showing still in the police contracted services, real estate conveyance taxes continue, and also the building fees tend to be, are higher as well. Expenses for the month were $3.7 million. 2.7 of that was to cover the payroll and operating expenses for education. The remaining million of that was the regular operating expenses for the town, half of that being the payroll-related expenses and benefits. That's about it for that. Town investments were $29 million. The contingency remains at the $153,000. That includes the two transfers that were approved earlier in the year. And the fund balance also still is not changed until we get the fiscal '21 results finalized. Main projects, I, you know, detailed a little bit in the back. Things that we're working on in the finance office are, the audit, I should be getting a draft of the financials next week, which would be nice to see. The fiscal year '23 budget, the worksheets went out to the departments. They're in the process of working on those. Working on the February bonding and the OS that's required for that and all the information for that, putting that together. And then still, we're still trying to get our e-finance upgrade going. And then the state uniform chart of accounts accounting project is going on. So there's always something going on in our office. That's it for my report. If anybody has any questions?
No questions?
All good.
All good? Thank you, Sue.
Sure, thanks.
All right, we will now move on to item number 10, Council Discussions on Future Projects. Does anybody have anything they'd like to discuss at this time?
Go ahead, Carol. No, go ahead. Go ahead. I don't know. No, probably wouldn't qualify as a future project, but something that I would very much like to see, and that was, as a result of talking to a lot of people during the campaign, and on a regular basis, there are a lot of questions about what's going on in town. And there's a lot going on in town. And I think that, I know that it would be so beneficial to have on our town website, on our town Facebook page, bullet pointed addresses of 73 West Main, that handsome stone-faced building. What is it, people want to know? And what's going on at the corner of High Street? And it's not just the new buildings, it's the train station, and it's a lot of Indian River Landing questions. The gazebo, what's all that about? I would really like to see, and also, in speaking with Carl and Chris previously, I understand that there's a real desire to grow the readership of the town Facebook page and the town website. Well, we're, we're the only ones with the answers to those questions. If we give those questions, I think that they'd come. People every day ask these, and I'm sure you hear it, too. The reason I wanted to talk to Mary today is I realized this would be asking, I think, a great deal of Mary. And I don't like to ask anymore of Mary. But I'd like to volunteer to help to do that, because I've just given up writing about Clinton for three and a half years, and I could write another three and a half years. I would be happy to help. But I think that that would be really important for our residents to know. And not to go trolling around, looking at all different places, trying to get the answers, and only getting gossip, but just getting the answers. And it would also be us owning what's going on in town. Owning that there's a lot of business coming in. Owning that we have a state-of-the-art train station. I would like to see that happen. I don't know if one makes a motion. I don't know if that's a future project, but I think that that would be really important.
So, I mean, that's obviously come up a lot. Obviously, communications has been a big thing. You know, I know we've tried in the past, we've met with, me and Mary have met with people in the past, again, you know, you know, how we can better do some of that stuff. And I think we've done a very good job of it. And, you know, some of the, some of the questions that people ask, we may not have the answers. Carl, obviously, a project like, you know, Indian River, I mean, the developer is approved to do that project, but not necessarily, doesn't come to the town and say, hey, listen, I'm putting in this store or that store. That's on him. He's the one going out and getting the leased tenants and everything else. So that, you know, getting updates and down that kind of path is a little bit more difficult. But I mean, again, maybe on a monthly basis, maybe on a whatever basis to try to have contacts. You know, the developer obviously has contact with land use as well as Carl, but, you know, how much information does he really provide? If he doesn't have a signed lease, he's probably not gonna release much information to the town either. You know, so-
To be perfectly honest, that's why I signed up to be on P&amp;Z, because I would like to learn what's going on.
Right. And I mean, that's always been kind of the issue, is, you know, here's, here's our first meeting, and so you see who comes. So, you know, I guess the frustration part is, is that everybody wants to know what's going on, but nobody wants to get involved. So then it becomes, you know, where are we going? We did a great job. I think Mary's done an absolute fabulous job with the Facebook page and getting that up and running again, and doing what we had to do to get that, you know, off and running again. So we do what we can to get as much on there as we can. But yes, there are the things that, if people think that would be beneficial to the town as a whole to get that information out, then I think then, you know, we can obviously look into that and we can talk about that. You know, that's obviously something that we can discuss going forward.
That'd be great. I think, you know, every two weeks, there's just so much going on.
To me, the biggest issue is how.
Right.
What is the best avenue to put that information out there? And I, you know, the idea of putting bullet points out there is great. I just, I just, you know, you put one piece of information out there, and there's 83 questions following it, and that's where the misinformation comes in. And what, what, I mean, are you hitting the topics that people are concerned about? Maybe like a Q&amp;A thing with a, with a one-line answer. 73 West Main Street is eight apartments being built by Mike Milano.
I think people would love that.
Indian River is, you know, they're building the Madison Furniture Barn, and they have, you know-
People would eat that up.
We know this stuff in land use. Nobody ever calls land use to say what's going on. But the information is public. It's public information. It's hard to touch on a topic without it turning into, you know, a tornado.
I think it's our responsibility.
Well, we have talked about this numerous times. You know, that Carl asked the Harbor News to put, you know, how they have the selectmen's desk for Westbrook and Old Sabre. It was refused. They said they didn't have room for Carl to do a monthly column on what's new in Clinton. I don't know if you saw that email or not, but that was a topic that came up a lot. He asked, and he was told by them that they didn't have room for him to do that. That would have been very helpful.
Wouldn't that be an even better reason to do this on our own?
Yeah, well, we all, Eric's gonna disagree.
And then Eric could find out all the good stories from our own-
No one's gonna disagree, Carrie. My point, my bottom line is how? How do you, how do, where is the best place for it to go? What is the, the tool used? Is it a Q&amp;A, or is it just putting it out there? And, and if you're just putting it out there, you're gonna miss half of what people really want. Maybe it has to be a Q&amp;A.
You can't put it all in the first week. This would be an ongoing thing. And maybe you could divide it by neighborhoods. In the West End, this is happening. In Indian River, this is. But I think that not, to not do it, wouldn't be the answer.
Well, I mean, we've talked about this ad nauseam, but if you can come up with an idea, I mean, I guarantee it would be well listened to and-
I mean, I think if it's just, I mean, if the idea is to get out the information to the public on certain projects that are going on in town, and then that's it. Because you, a Q&amp;A, no. Because you're gonna get involved with too much-
Going back to those bullet points.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. So it's Indian River Landing, here's an update, once, whatever, you know?
That's why Facebook doesn't work.
And again, the information, I think, should be when we have something. Because Indian River is, you know, when we have a confirmed new tenant, then, hey, listen, let's be on the forefront and get that out. Like you said, if the buildings-
Definitely. You don't tell anything that hasn't been happening, but there's a gazebo out there that has a trailhead for future trails. That's fantastic. Nobody knows what the gazebo's there for.
See, you know, and you know, you know that was part of the original plan. You know that.
But very few people know that. Even though they're not here, they do care.
And, and I'm not saying they don't care, but I'm just saying, where do they go to get their information? Because like, you know, the whole big thing of, you know, the big, at the Big Y Plaza in Indian River, the Starbucks. And I mean, there's been an article in the paper, we, you know, it's been posted, and it's been in a couple different articles. But yet, I still hear from people, what's going on in that big building? So it's like-
So wouldn't it be great to give it to them? Just about. How?
But we have, like, right, so there are times when we have, but you're still gonna get people that are gonna say, you know, what's happening, or what are we doing? So I can agree, and I think it's a great idea as well. You know, we can work with Mary and see if, you know, how often this happens. We'll have another discussion about that.
Facebook is not the answer.
And then we get that information out to them. And it's basically just giving them an update on what's going on, on the projects in town. I think that's, that's-
I'd love to-
I think we can agree to do that.
Work with that. Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions, comments?
I had a, months ago, we had the discussion from the National Hazard Mitigation Plan. And part of that discussion that night was that they had asked for the town to create a committee or a discussion group or something for, to, to look- a committee or a discussion group or something for, to look at the report that they submitted. And I didn't know, and I've never heard anything more about that. And, you know, living as near to the water as I do and watching the tide coming in, you know, and, well, anyway, I wondered if there was any interest in addressing some of the topics that were in that report, and if there's any interest in putting some sort of a committee together to, to check that box that the report had requested.
I mean...
If the council wants to appoint a committee, you can...
Well, okay, I'll take another look at that, because I thought the report was wonderful and very informative, and I thought that they had asked that of the council in the course of the report.
At the staff level, with the consulting planner, we're trying to get UConn in to help do some benchmarking and data collection that responds to...
That would check that box in that report, do you think?
That would just be a basis of collecting information that would then address the issue that it talks about of a plan for sea level rise, coastal impacts, and things of that nature. So that's collecting some information to understand what's happening in the town, in the town's coastal areas and resiliency. If the council wants to create a committee, the council needs to act to appoint a committee.
Well, it sounds like that should happen after this, then.
One is a data collection exercise, the other is a body that's going to review the plan for you.
Okay. All right. Well, now I just forgot my next question. Talk amongst yourselves.
So are you interested in putting a committee together and doing that?
Oh, well, yeah, I'd like to. I think it's something that is very, that is more important every day. So I'm going to get the report back out and take a look at it and see exactly what it was that I thought that they were looking for on the part of the town as a response.
Again, with the communication, then we could put something out to the residents in saying the town council would like to put together a mitigation commission, committee, and we'll be looking for volunteers.
Yeah.
And just see how many people come forward.
Good idea.
Because, you know...
I mean, the more we ask, the more, I mean, that's kind of the other problem.
Exactly. We get more people interested and...
It's on a lot of people's minds. A lot of people's minds.
I'm sure there are people along the shore. There must be a whole bunch of people out there.
And would the Conservation Commission be a part of that?
Sustainability would sustain.
Sustainability would be a part of that?
Oh, I don't know, though. I mean, it's months since we had the report come around. I forget specifically. But that brings me to another question. So we have, the Blight Ordinance takes effect December 4th. And in the Blight Ordinance, there is a committee, a panel created. How do we need to make that happen at this point? Do we, how would, do we get that panel together? And we will need a blight officer and maybe more than one. When do we have that discussion and...
What's the makeup of the committee?
Is it three people or five people?
It's three people.
I thought it was three.
So you have, you have a hearing board of three individuals that you would need to appoint. So that should be something, if you have volunteers in mind, that those individuals would do that at your next meeting. If you're interested, I've had two people come forward and suggest that they would be interested in that.
For the hearing board?
Yes.
Okay.
So that gives you two-thirds of it.
And then the blight officer?
Blight officer, the ordinance calls for two. So it's the town manager or his designate, and the building official or his designate. So we would need to work through the designate piece as to whether that's a staff appointee or...
Set Carl out.
We got a town manager, why do we need an appointee? I think we're good there.
So would, so would, having that as an agenda item, bringing in suggestions of people, or is that something you'd rather do individually?
A panel is your appointment, so you'd have to pick those individuals, the two that have expressed an interest. One was Tim Guerra, the other is Dave Adams. So they have some interest in that. You then have to find another volunteer to fill out the third spot.
That blight officer, that is a big responsibility. Is it okay to contact people and see if they'd be interested in that? Because there's a gentleman who comes into Land Use who has been, oh, God, 100 blight complaints. He drives around and, I mean, if there's anybody in Clinton who would be interested in taking on this big job, because it is going to be a big job, and working through it, it might be this fellow, can I, would I be able to call him and talk to him or...
That, the blight officer is not a council appointment.
Correct.
It's specific to the manager and the building official, and then those individuals can designate somebody.
So, so how do you find that person, then?
Well, Richard and I would have to talk about whether we're going to do it or whether we're going to deputize somebody. So we could continue to deputize Kathy for consistency's sake, and then it's who else do you deputize to do it? So I know some people have expressed interest in the past. That's just a matter of making sure you've got somebody who can be consistent and understand what is blight and what isn't blight. And the code book defines blight.
Okay, yeah, yeah, very nicely.
So your appointees to the hearing board would be a next meeting thing, if you're ready to go.
So that third person would come from a council suggestion?
You will.
So then that will be our next, on our next agenda. Anybody else?
Just a quick one. Don't know who I would ask to do this, because I don't know whose responsibility it is. But with all the small businesses doing everything that they can to beautify our town, their place, their shops, I would like very much for whomever would be responsible to approach CBS about the landscaping that they promised us and that died and that should be replanted. It would be 100 more feet beautified.
Would that be a zoning issue since they approved the plan?
Yes.
Yep. Land use. They would be the ones that would have to get in touch with the property owner to let them know. Because again, the developer comes in with a plan, he comes in with a maintenance plan for that property. When they have approved, and when they have an approved project, they have to submit a maintenance program on how they will maintain and keep the property up. So Land Use is the one that would have that. So they would be the ones that would have to contact the property owner and let them know that they would have to, that we would appreciate if they, you know, stick to, and it's not a difficult call, stick to the maintenance program that you supplied to the town when you got approved. And, you know, unfortunately, sometimes they do need a nudge in order to do that, and we've had that conversation, and yes, it's, you know, you know, on an ongoing basis, it needs to happen.
Since I can't talk to Land Use, I would ask Mr. Kilduff to do that? Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Everybody good? All right, we will move on to the chairman's report. Again, just real quickly, obviously, three new members that are coming out to the council. I just want to make sure that we all maintain and keep, you know, keep working together that, like we have in the past. You know, I think we've done a great job in the first two years with this new form of government of putting the agendas aside and just working for what we believe is in the best interest of our town. That's what we're here to do and what we're here to serve. That's why we were elected, is to represent the citizens of our town. And as long as we stay focused on that, I think we'll do a great job. So congratulations to the new members, and we all look forward, obviously, to working together and doing what we all want to do, which is, you know, in the best interest of our town. So best of luck. Item number 12, town manager's report.
So you have the written report that I sent out to you in the agenda packet. Couple of things to call your attention to. At the top of that was the review of the goal setting that the council acted on previously. Now that there's a new council for another two years, it would really be a best practice to take a look at it. It went out in the orientation materials for are those statements and goals still valid, or is this something that needs to be amended? So it would be helpful if there was some council consensus on a workshop or some other session in order to take a look at that and work through whether the assumptions and statements made in 2020 are still valid for this council going forward from 2021 into 2023. So that would be helpful. It's helpful to me, and now that we're back to meeting in person, I hope it would be helpful to the council in your decision-making so that you can see it and we can reproduce it so it's available to be referenced at meetings rather than something you've got to recall off your head while we're on a virtual meeting. Potential federal funding, the infrastructure bill was now, has now been signed into law. Connecticut is earmarked to receive a significant amount of money. Within that, 445 million is to be available over five years for drinking water infrastructure. So this would be a potential source of funds to start tackling Rocky Ledge. We need to continue to monitor how those dollars are going to flow from Washington into Hartford, and then monitor what Hartford is going to be doing for how those dollars get distributed. So there's more to come on that, and that we need to monitor how those dollars are going to work their way down to the local level and be translated into projects. Historic preservation grant, which was the Commerce Avenue, Luffingwell area. The grant application went in. There was extensive back and forth with Peggy Adler to get the application ready for submission to the State Historic Preservation Officer. They now have it. The earliest they could act on it would be a meeting that they have at the beginning of the month in December. The applications are reviewed on a rolling basis, so if it's not reviewed in December, it would be reviewed in January. On the budget, as Sue noted, we've started the wheels of the budget-making process. The departments should start filling in their operating budget requests. There's going to be new information in capital submittals, so there'll be a more robust capital plan than a simple spreadsheet that would speak to multi-year projects, consequences of funding, not funding, and what, the linkages between projects and where the town needs to go going forward. So hopefully, that will help you in your review of the budget, that you'll have additional information that supports what's going on with at least the capital requests. Few items on insurance, that there's apparently some disruption in the insurance market, which is going to cause potential impacts onto our budget. The risk for cyber insurance is a function of the world we live in with people playing games and agencies in this state that have had issues associated with cyber exposures. So we're working through that now with town staff and the IT staff at the Board of Ed so that we can position ourselves early, make changes if need be, in order to make sure that we can get, get coverage. We got coverage this year. There were a bunch of towns that were with the Connecticut Conference Municipalities' insurance product who did not get coverage. So the market is a little unsettled. Property insurance is becoming an issue now. Some of that seems to be COVID supply chain related. So it would be hard to see that that's something that would be a factor, at least a material factor in where pricing would go, but it's something to monitor, something for you all to be aware of, that we're trying our best to control costs, but clearly, things outside of the town of Clinton impact where our pricing goes. Another major item for you, in the capital plan, we started a set aside for vehicle replacement at the, for the fire department. The first project truck to come up is a pumper. So the fire department is moving forward with its bid specs. They had a committee, they put together their bid specs for the fire truck. Those bid specs were submitted to me last week. The exciting reading of going through that over the weekend. So 68 pages of specifications. So there's a back and forth going on now over some of the language in the specs, what their intent is for some of the language in the specs, in order to prep that for going out onto the street, in order for that to be a project that could be funded going forward. And then if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Nice question. You didn't touch on your River Cog portion here, but the second paragraph, it says additionally, the cog is working on a joint bid for document digitization, which might be of interest to Clinton. What does that mean to the project, the document digitizing that's going on right now?
The scope of work for that project is meant to be regional in nature, that we could get one vendor to do, to do the region rather than how Clinton procured it as a one-off. The scope also envisions taking a look at already digitized records to see if there's a better way to make that function.
Well, there's a better way.
I don't doubt that there's a better way. So we did not continue with Trino doing other town departments until Land Use was resolved. So it's an opportunity to get onto that bid for other stuff to be digitized going forward in the future, but then also an opportunity to look backwards at the Trino setup as to whether there's a way to make that a little bit more accessible and understandable, especially when you're pulling up records and that there's no description in terms of what it is other than click on it and see what it pops up as. So the bid is still in the early days of being put together on that one. It was thought that that might be a regional ARPA project, when Cog was asking for an allocation of ARPA monies for regional activities. So it's still a decision each town would have to make as to whether you want to entertain this. There is capital dollars already in the budget for record digitization.
Lucky him, I think he could have been doing it all weekend. Any other questions for Carl?
Just because I'm new here, what is the schedule for the ARPA money and scheduling it, and when does that have to be done? And do you do that before we start the budget?
So ARPA exists outside of the budget. It is not tucked into our budget like perhaps it is in some cities that took it as a way to backfill some of their budget holes. We did not, we did not do that here. We are not eligible to do that here based on our, our revenue, because we sold Morgan. That skewed our revenue calculations under the Treasury's formula. So it kind of exists outside of the budget cycle. The council previously had two workshops on it and discussed potential projects. The council flagged a bunch of other things to be added that we're trying to pull together the pieces on that. So that would come back to then this body for a further discussion. What I told the last council was that you should have a public hearing before going any further, have the public weigh in on the proposed plan. After the public hearing, obviously, the council considers what is said, and then there's a process by which you go forward with appropriating it. Treasury kicked out the timelines for what needs to be done, so it's still very much flying and building the airplane at the same time. Perhaps beneficial or complicating factors is that there's also a bill up in, or down in DC trying to inject more flexibility into ARPA. So you kind of got one set of rules for when the ARPA bill was passed. We're operating under the interim final rules from Treasury, and then layered on top of that is another potential piece of legislation which would make it more flexible and change how Treasury is writing the rules right now.
But you have, you have your plan. The last council got the plan together and...
The council received information on potential projects for funding. The council gave me a few other things that they wanted to see in that plan. There is nothing that is final at this point, because again, there should be a public hearing to finalize that.
Could I take a look at it? I mean, it's...
I can email it.
Okay, I'd love to see it. Okay.
And I'll send it to Tom and Chris also.
Anyone else?
I'd like to see that.
You had to show up to the meeting to get it, so...
You guys forgot I was here.
Listen, we know you're driving down some lonely road. We figured you were sleeping. It's good to know you're still alive, let's be honest. Anything else? All right. Town Council Committee Liaison Reports. Mr. D?
Yeah. I'm not going to try to lie to anybody. Somehow I missed that darn meeting. Just came up on me, bypassed it, but I did scrutinize their minutes very closely. And from what I could see, budget's moving right along the way it should be. And the only thing that really popped out at me was that they did hire another dispatcher. So although we won't see it immediately, the chief did state that probably within a month or so, then we'll see the overtime level off again, which they had been doing a great job on until they lost that dispatcher that left. So, and I believe, if I read it correctly, that service dog presentation, I think it's going to be at their next police commission meeting, if I read their minutes right. Might be something people would like to tune in on. Again, for anybody that didn't hear that, it's similar to like, well, their dog, it's a dog that would help out in, like a service dog to calm people down. If you had a domestic or something like that, you can bring the dog in, calm them down and things of that nature. It will not be a routine, regular police dog of, you know.
Isn't Chucky doing that now? Costic?
I'm not sure if that's true enough, but I mean, it's not doing this dog. This dog is strictly, you know.
This was a service dog.
It's a new project.
This is a new project, and I think it's Officer Rikia that will be taking care of it. And she will make the presentation formally to the police commission, I believe, the next meeting.
This is a patrol person who's doing this? This would be a patrol person?
Handling the dog?
Yeah.
I don't know if they've gotten that far yet, Carol, about who would actually be the handler for, for the dog. The presentation has to come up.
I, I find that very concerning. Bringing a dog that, for a calming purpose. I mean, and, and you designate a patrol person and, I mean, it just.
How that dog shows up.
What?
I said, we don't know whether the policeman would have the dog showing up with it.
By the time we hear about it, it's going to be pretty much.
That's what I say. The presentation will be very interesting to attend because you would get these questions answered. Who handles the dog? Where would the dog be housed? Whatever. It's strictly in its infancy stage. Some towns have used it. And I guess they feel that they should at least discuss it.
Yep. That's all it is.
Next, I'll need a kitten.
Anybody else Liaison Report?
Oh, anybody else?
Get up the doc. Get on to your report.
There was a Public Works Committee meeting last night and they are, Todd is, has, my understanding is that he has a, a good level of supplies for upcoming service needs this winter, but he's talking more vendors in case the need arises to, to increase what he has. And the fall sports season is essentially over. I think there are two more football games and, but soccer is over. So they're kind of in their, in their winter mode already. But he didn't mention, they're in the process of getting a new employee, correct? They're vetting, I mean, they've sent out a, or did, well, anyway, that didn't.
They're fully staffed.
Yeah.
They're fully staffed as a.
The new position that the council added in the last budget has been filled.
Okay. Well, anyway, everything seems like smooth sailing up there. So all good.
Thank you, Carol. That's it, I guess, for any liaison. All right. We'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second discussion. All in favor? All right. Post stand. Thank you all again.